We're calling SCAPU's Planning Commission meeting the order here, seven o'clock. It's Thursday, July the 24th. Excuse me. I'm reading something else. Excuse me, the 25th of January. So number one is we're calling with the order and then we're going to do a roll call. So I'm starting from my left.
Oh, Sarah Jones Graham.
Marty.
Ty Bailey.
Bill Blank.
Rita Bernhard.
Got another one.
Carlo Vernwald.
Uh, we have the minutes of, uh, let's see, June the 22nd here, 2023. Is that correct?
Really?
Ow, wow. Approval of the minutes. Has everybody looked at the minutes and is there any questions or any corrections they wish to make? I was in presence, so.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, 4-0 is citizen input. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on a subject not on the agenda tonight? If so, come forward. Okay. Then we'll move to new business, 5.1, docket number SDR 323. Jim Popenhagen and Jenny Martez, Martin Ez, excuse me, have requested approval of an application for site development review, SDR 323, to allow for the erection of a pre-engineered metal building to be used as a private parking facility and installing associated site amenities. The site is located at an unaddressed property off of Northeast First Street, northwest of the Northeast William Street and Northeast First Street intersection. On property described as Columbia County S.A.R.M.A.P. number 3212AC01100. So the format of this will be a limited land use decision, which does not allow for verbal testimony during the hearing since we are required to, uh, in, excuse me, not require interpretation of the exercise of policy or legal judgment. However, written comments are permitted prior to the deadline of the public comment period. So they had to be received by the 24th at 5:00 P.M. Did we ever receive anything? I didn't see anything.
No.
Okay, with that, we're going to open up with our limited land use decision statement. And I'm reading this for the chair. "I am calling this public hearing to order to consider an application for site development review. The procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Limited land use decisions do not take verbal public testimony as mentioned because they do not require the interpretation or exercise of policy or legal judgment. So any written comments should be included in the record, which we've already discussed. So does any planning commissioner wish to declare ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest regarding this matter?" I do. Okay. Only in the sense that we are a small community and we do business with local businesses and that gentleman up here I have the customer of. But that should not make any bearing on the decision I make today.
Shayna.
Uh, "Does any party wish to challenge any of the commissioners in partiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? That'd be somebody out there." Not hearing anything, we'll move over. "The order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, and then a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. The decision of the planning commission can be appealed to city council." All right, that opened it up. And Lori will make your presentation.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, thank you for being here. Happy New Year. I wanted to introduce you all, if you haven't met, our new planning commissioners. Uh, we have Marty Markey here as a full member. He was appointed in November. And Sarah Jones Graham as our alternate member. We do have a full planning commission now, which is great. Uh, we were able to meet with Marty and Sarah last December. Uh, so we had a good meeting and we've got a great group of commissioners, so that's great to see.
Welcome.
Yes. Uh, so tonight I'll be presenting the application for site development review, SDR 323. This is processed as a limited land use decision. Uh, as I always do, I'll begin by summarizing the subject site and observation sections at the beginning of the staff report. Uh, next I'll point out where the applicable approval criteria can be found and what page the findings are contained on. Um, and then lastly, I'll provide staff's recommendation and we'll look at the conditions of approval briefly. So I'm going to start on page five of the packet. And when I reference page numbers, it'll be the numbers in blue to the bottom right of the page. So again, we mentioned the subject site is, um, it's actually at the northern terminus of Northeast First Street, just west of Northeast First. Uh, currently consists of a 4,000 square foot parcel. It's being used as a gravel parking lot. It has two temporary carports on it. North of the subject site, there is a stormwater facility that serves the northwest self-storage facility. And then to the northeast are the First Street Apartments. East of the subject site is Northeast First Street. And then east of that is an automobile repair shop. South of the subject site is a multi-use building. It's being partially used as the DEQ vehicle testing station. Southern portion of the building is or was used as a church. Uh, west of the subject site are the railroad tracks. Beyond that's Highway 30. So the subject site and all surrounding properties are zonelite industrial with the exception of the parcel where the First Street Apartments are located, which is zone manufactured housing residential. The subject site does not have any sensitive lands such as floodplains, wetlands, fishery, parient corridor. Under observations, the requested approval, again, the request is for the erection of a pre-engineered metal building. This will be used as a private parking facility, AKA basically a garage. Um, and then they would also be installing associated site amenities. There is a second approval that is requested. Section 17.70.050A4, which is from the light industrial code, uh, does require a 50-foot side or rear yard setback where light industrial zone properties up at a residential zoning district. The subject site is light industrial. That property to the northeast is manufactured housing. And this triggers a side setback. Um, that needs to be measured from the building to the northern property line of 50 feet unless the planning commission allows the reduction of, which it can, of up to 50%, bringing that to a 25-foot side setback on the north side. Um, that does require that buffering and screening be provided. So the, we have here five considerations for why we feel this should be granted. Um, the applicant is showing a 25-foot setback. They can accomplish that on their site plan. You'll see that on page 94 of your packet. Uh, the northern property line of the subject site is over 50 feet from the two closest residential structures on that apartment site. Um, and then between the nearest apartment building to the actual metal building would be over 80 feet. The proposed use of the metal building is a private parking facility. It's not expected to produce, um, you know, glare or noise or odor or anything that would be in an intense type of light industrial use. There are three large Douglas fir trees that are on the apartment site, um, kind of in between the apartment buildings and where this, um, where this metal building would be, which would provide some supplemental buffering between uses. And then the applicant is providing the buffering and screening they're able to provide on their site, meeting chapter 17.100. One of the things you'll see if you look at that site plan is, uh, there is an area along that northern property line. We have a, a city water main that runs through that parcel. So that's why they're not able to plant trees along that northern property line. Uh, we don't want huge tree roots, you know, interfering with the water mains. So that's another reason as well. Under right-of-way and public improvements, the property has frontage and primary access from Northeast First Street. Northeast First right-of-way width is substandard for a local commercial industrial street. Uh, it's just the way that street ended up being developed over time. So in lieu of performing, uh, performing street improvements, the applicant is requesting to sign a non-remonstrance agreement. This is allowed by the development code if certain criteria are met. We do have the findings related to those criteria on page 33 of the packet. Vehicular access and off-street parking. Uh, so again, the access is from Northeast First Street. There's not an established driveway at this time. The entire lot is gravel at this point. The applicant is proposing to install a 12-foot, pardon me, 12-foot wide driveway along that frontage. And then they would pay the first, uh, the easternmost 20 feet of the site uh, to ensure that no gravel is tracked onto the roadway or anything. SCAPU's development code requires one parking space per 1,500 square feet of area for fleet storage. And this was the closest like parking standard that we could apply to this use. And so based on, uh, the square footage of the storage building, the applicant has to provide one parking space. However, the applicant is proposing two spaces. Uh, one would be an ADA stall in front of the building and the other stall being inside the building. Additionally, the applicant is proposing two bicycle, uh, parking spaces as well to meet the code requirement. Under traffic generation, the applicant submitted a trip generation analysis. It provided the estimated total trips. Um, they considered the existing use as an unofficial park and ride lot and, and the anticipated total trips, uh, as a warehouse. Again, we didn't have a good comparable in the I.T.E. code, the transportation, uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual, which is what's used to determine those trip generation rates. Um, that resulted in a net decrease of 31 trips. So obviously it's not going to have, um, you know, any kind of a large traffic impact. Again, because of the low, uh, volume of expected daily trips, there's no mitigation or anything that's required for this development. Under landscaping, screening, and street trees, the applicant would be required to provide buffering and screening uh, along the portion of the northern property line, as we mentioned a second ago. The applicant did submit a landscaping plan. Uh, it does illustrate the arrangement and species of existing and proposed landscaping. Uh, the screening portion of buffering and screening requirements, uh, the screening would be provided by a five-foot tall cedar fence along that northern property line with the exception of, uh, within the, what we call a visual clearance area. They would need to restrict the height of the fence within that area to three feet. So to meet the buffering requirements, the applicant's proposing, again, to consider, um, the existing Douglas fir trees to help with, uh, meeting that need. But again, they are planting a variety of shrubbery on their site in the northeast corner of the site. Um, and again, that's because there were, uh, conflicts with having trees within that public water main easement area. Under lighting, the applicant did submit an illumination plan as part of their land use application. There is an existing street light that is mounted on a utility pole along their frontage that does provide adequate lighting, basically for the entire width of, uh, Northeast First Street along the whole entire frontage of their site. Um, and also along the proposed parking space and building entrances. And then they are proposing one light on the northern elevation of the building that would, uh, illuminate the remaining areas of the site. Under utilities, the applicant submitted an existing conditions plan, a grading and utility plan, uh, which illustrates where the proposed utilities would be and a stormwater report. There's an existing eight-inch concrete sewer main in Northeast First Street. Uh, there is a lateral there, but we don't really have information on it. It's likely, uh, fairly old. So the recommended conditions of approval do require the applicant to, uh, TV or video inspect that line, um, for the city engineer and public works director approval. And if the lateral's insufficient, the applicant would need to replace that. The applicant proposes to utilize the northerly shedding of surface water to collect stormwater, treat a water quality event, and detain a 100-year event in a new onsite stormwater drainage ditch. Uh, and again, that's located along the northern property line. The site's frontage currently has a six-inch C900 water main within the Northeast First Street right-of-way. It transitions to an eight-inch main as it heads west into the subject site and then it exits the site to the north. The applicant is proposing to install a new water service lateral and meter to serve the proposed building. Under public and private agencies, uh, all required noticing has been met for this application. Uh, there are, there is a list here of all of the, um, city departments and agency partners that received notice of the application. Any applicable agency comments have been included in the conditions of approval. Uh, we did notice property owners within 200 feet of the site on January 11th. Um, and we did not receive any written comments prior to the deadline of 5:00 P.M. yesterday. So next we will, uh, I'll just go ahead and enlist the relevant approval criteria and where the findings for those criteria can be found within this report. For the visual clearance area criteria, those are contained in chapter 12.10. The findings are on pages nine through 11. For right-of-way dedications and improvement criteria, those are found in chapter 17.01. The findings are on page 11. Light industrial criteria are contained in chapter 17.70. The findings are on pages 11 and 12. Landscaping, screening, and fencing criteria are contained in chapter 17.100. Findings are on pages 13 through 15. Off-street parking and loading requirements are in chapter 17.106. The findings are on pages 15 through 26. Site development review criteria are located in chapter 17.120. Findings are on pages 27 through 32. Street and utility improvement standards are located in chapter 17.154. Findings are on pages 32 through 38. Procedures for limited land use decisions are found in chapter 17.164. Findings are on pages 38 through 39. And then if you could turn to page 39 with me. So page 39 includes, um, the staff recommendation. So based on the findings of fact and the materials submitted by the applicant, staff does recommend approval to the planning commission for SDR 3-23. And that approval would be subject to the 22, uh, conditions of approval that we've outlined here. The conditions are, um, just like they are usually, um, very boilerplate. And they just require compliance with our codes, public works design standards. And then any additional conditions of approval really are related to those, uh, agency comments. So we did have some time to send the conditions of approval to the applicant and their consultant prior to finalizing everything just to see if they had questions or concerns. Uh, they did share that they didn't see any concerns, um, or didn't have concerns. So, um, that, that was good. And that concludes my presentation of the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions or you can have the applicant, um, come up for their presentation.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, the applicants, please step forward, one or both.
All.
Can you identify yourselves and your address? Oh yeah, I gotta make sure that's on.
My name's Jim Openhagen. And, um, my address is, uh, 24600, Earthwest St. Helens Road, Portland, Oregon. Um, Ocky Point Marina is where I live.
Okay.
My name is Chase Berg. I am with Lower Columbia Engineering here as the applicant representative and, uh, answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, you've heard what staff has to say. Do you have any comments you want to make or any things that you want to add to those comments?
Um, I don't really know what to say. Just, you know, having this, uh, structure built for a garage to my classic cars and stuff in, um, auto repair business and I've collected a few cars and trying to keep them out of the weather for, you know, keep them in good condition for, that's, that's my reason for.
You consider this as an extension of your business? Or is it just because you're storing the cars to keep them pristine condition? Any other questions on that? Okay. It was pretty straightforward.
It's a good one to ease into here.
Yeah, right.
Okay, is there anything staff can, uh, respond to if there's any questions? Or nothing?
Uh, no, it's, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'm just going to close this portion of the hearing and we'll have a discussion by the commissioners, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Heard that, uh, it's pretty straightforward, but if there's any questions, it's a good time to ask.
Uh, no questions. The only comment I'd have is I was a little bit, if it was a different location, the adjustment of that, uh, right-of-way would be an only pause. But given the location and the traffic,
Yeah.
I'm not overly concerned on that.
I know I've been to the site, seen it, what you're trying to do. You know, I have no problems with it.
I don't either.
Okay.
Everything's been covered, I think.
Okay, well, shall we go ahead and make a motion here? Then you have to read the.
E-dash. As suggested by staff.
And then conditions of approval.
Yeah, conditions.
Right, right.
Perfect.
There's no additional conditions of approval. Everything is fine, so.
A second.
Yeah, a motion has been made and seconded that we approve, uh, 5.1, docket number SDR 323. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Guess you're okay. I don't know when you're going to have this done. I want to do it when the weather's nicer, but. Okay.
Fuck.
All right, very good. I know you'll work with Lori and the staff here and get it done, right? So thank you for coming, presenting it. Okay, well, now we'll move over to 6-0, which is communications. Oh, it's been a while, but let's do a calendar check. Uh, according to the calendar here, here we are. Yeah. Last one in there. Mission docket here. Uh, Monday, the first, we already celebrated that. So we're out of January for that part, but we are. Next thing going on here is the 27th, which is council retreat and goal-setting session. Does not include us.
I mean, it's a public meeting. You're welcome to come. I'll be there.
Don't have to worry about it though, right? All right. So now we're out of January and we're into February. And on the 5th, we have an urban renewal agency meeting at 6:00 P.M. And a council meeting is at 7:00 P.M. Says planning commission meeting on the 8th. Is there anything scheduled?
Yeah, so that'll be for, um, a public hearing on the parks' master plan adoption.
Yeah. Going to be in Toronto.
Okay, sorry, sorry, let us know.
All right. Uh, don't want to forget the 14th, that's Valentine's Day. So your sweethearts get all the flowers and candy and everything. Uh, on the 15th is the EDC noon Parks and Rec, uh, at 6:00 P.M. Okay? Was the Economic Development Commissioner, or city, I'd say, in Parks and Rec. And, uh, economic development is at noon. I don't know if I said that, but it should be, so, okay. And on the 19th, the city offices will be closed because it is President's Day. Pick your president, let's see. On the 20th, council session will be at 6:00 P.M. The council meeting will be at 7:00 P.M. Because of the holiday, they move it to the Tuesday.
Yep.
On the 22nd, we show a planning commission meeting again.
I don't think we'll have that.
They not have.
No, uh-uh, we would have already had to have an application noticed and ready to go.
It's coming up. Wow, appreciation dinner again? Like we just had one.
Every year.
6:00 P.M., extapa's.
Yep.
So there you are. Uh, there's nothing else on the monthly calendar, so I think that takes care of a calendar update. Now we got that done. Is there anything anybody wishes to add to the calendar that I did not mention? Should be aware of? Okay.
I did have one correction on the calendar. We had sort of some last minute changes to the agendas. The, uh, urban renewal agency meeting will be on February 20th instead of the 5th. And that would, yeah, and that starts at 6:00. So the council work session will be an urban renewal agency meeting instead. So it took that slot, yeah.
But. That's it? Thank you for watching that. No? Uh, is there any commissioner comments they wish to make? Other than the fact that commissioners that are new, we want to thank you and welcome you. Please use your expertise and your in-thoughts, your, everything that you have that you can add to this body. All right. Are you, anything to add? I'm quiet down there, so I just want to. All right. Uh, then staff comments, since that's all we can come up with.
Okay, well, I have lots of comments. I have lots, I have lots of updates for you.
There are 20 minutes.
Yeah, um, okay, just wanted to extend an invitation to the boards and committees dinner. I believe you all have seen that invitation already for extapa, uh, February 28th at 6:00 P.M. Um, this is something that the city puts on every year to thank our, um, any of our citizens that volunteer to serve on a board or committee. Uh, so it's a good time and we share out kind of the work that was done during the year, um, during that event. Uh, so we have quite a bit going on in the planning department right now. I think MJ just counted, um, 16 active land use applications, which is a lot for us. Okay, down to fifteen, down to fifteen. I don't think I have all of them down here, but here's, here's kind of a, an update on some of the stuff that's going on. So let's see, these are applications that are in various stages of review, but they are, they have been submitted, land use applications that have been submitted but not deemed complete yet. So we have a remodel of a residential house to a commercial use for a new Remax real estate office. That's on the southeast corner of J P West and Southwest First Street. Uh, that will be site development review, just like tonight's application was. That is planning commission approved.
What is that for?
It's a Remax office. It'll just convert from a, from a residential to a commercial use. Uh, let's see, the three restaurant complex development that we did receive the land use application, it is in review. That's proposed to be located north of the Peak Performance, the old Sears building. Uh, that will be site development review as well. That is planning commission approved. Uh, let's see, we also received the Keys Road three million gallon, three million gallon water reservoir application, and that is a city project, uh, proposed to be located on the same site as the existing water reservoirs on Keys Road. Uh, that also will be site development review, also a steep slope permit, and that is also planning commission approved. We also just received today a three lot minor partition and minor variance application that would support three duplexes. Um, and that's on the northwest corner of J P West and Southwest Fourth Street, on the corner next to the park, sort of. Um, and that's planner approved, so that would, um, a three lot minor partition with each lot supporting a duplex. We also have a number of upcoming inquiry meetings. Uh, inquiry meetings are like the first stage of planning with the city. And so if you have a project that you're thinking about and you have like, you want your kind of big questions answered, make sure, you know, it's, it's gonna fly, uh, we, we invite people in for an inquiry meeting. And so let's see, uh, February twelfth, we have a inquiry meeting for a two acre annexation and proposed subdivision to create six to seven lots that would support duplexes. Uh, this site is located north of Southeast Elm and Ninth Street. So on the east side of the city. Uh, February twenty-second, we have an inquiry meeting for a mini storage proposal on the cinnamon tree parcel.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's been sitting there for some.
It's been sitting there a while.
See corner to another storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, let's see, and then we have a number of upcoming pre-application meetings. Pre-app meetings are required before you submit for land use. And that's when we bring in, um, different city departments like Public Works. And then we bring in agency partners like the P U D, um, and, and the Fire District and such, so that everyone gets all their questions answered and they can submit, you know, a robust land use application. So February first, so a week from today, we have a proposal for a new building and site amenities that would support a construction, sales and services company. Uh, and then this location is where the Healthy Smiles Building would have been constructed on Third and Prairie. So that did change hands. Uh, it did sell. And so, um, they're looking to move forward, I think, quite, quite fast. Um, and then early March, we haven't scheduled the meeting yet, but it'll be sometime in early March. Uh, Wana Credit Union did submit their pre-app application to construct a new office south of the By Mart property. And then, uh, just the fifty-year plan is still ongoing. Right now, N J's doing some good work for us. He's doing, uh, the U G B sub-area analysis. So we have to look at each of those sub areas that were required by the state to study and say, like, can it be served with utilities, you know, and does it have terrible slopes or, you know, basically kind of providing notes to say, you know, why it is or is not a good fit to bring into the U G B. So we're working on that right now. The next city council planning commission joint work session on this project will be March eighteenth. And then the next committee meeting, uh, for that project will be April ninth. And then upcoming this year, you know, we could see the light at the end of the tunnel. The adoption hearings will be starting this fall. So just generally, what'll happen is that'll go to planning commission first for the adoption of everything, the economic opportunities analysis, the housing needs analysis, the comp plan amendments, the development code amendments, the zone changes, all of it. It's all together, all together. It'll come to you first. Um, the planning commission's role will be to make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will hear it next. Uh, they will, we'll just say they'll approve. Once that happens, it has to go to Columbia County after that. And they will also need to hold hearings with their planning commission and their Board of Commissioners. Uh, and then once that's done, um, you know, pending any appeals, we'll be through that process.
Will be the next town hall meeting.
Yep, April sixth. So that's all I have. Did Chris or N J want to share anything?
Give you a rundown on projects.
Mike.
If you want to run down on projects. Go for it. Uh, not to repeat what Lori said, um, I'll try not to anyway. So Dutch Canyon, uh, our well site, we have a new Aluvia well that is going in over there. And that's partly, uh, it's going through engineering right now. On that, and then we have another, um, we have a Basal well that we're doing. It's gonna start drilling at Miller, Miller, our Miller Road Treatment Site. So back on Miller Road there, and that should be starting here in a few weeks. As far as water goes, we also are working on the engineering for the, the three million gallon reservoir up on Keys that Lori mentioned. So land use and engineering are going on at the same time there. We have sixty percent plans and they're moving pretty quick. We want to start construction this, uh, this summer as early as possible. And then we also have designed for the northwest part of the city to do major upgrades on the water lines there and that'll kind of, it's some backbone infrastructure that will actually tie into the Bella Vista waterline work we did. And that'll be, that'll feed up to the reservoir, uh, at the top of the hill there, uh, at the very top. Right. Uh, and then, and then that includes side streets too, so that's, that's a, that's a really big project. We also have the Myrtle and Oak Waterline Project that we, um, took through design and, and, uh, final engineering last summer. That's approved and will be, we're hoping to bid out a portion of it this year to do. Those are really small, like one and two, I think it's a two inch water main that runs on one of those Myrtle or Oak. I can't remember which, so really small. We want to get that upsized. Um, we wrapped up a sidewalk project in front of, uh, the, the P U D substation on East Columbia. We just wrapped that up. Hopefully, uh, folks like what we did over there.
Really appreciated.
Oh, yeah, you're our walker, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Already.
Yeah. Uh, hopefully your feet don't get too wet there. There's one, there's one catch base that we didn't put in with that project, which causes one of the ADA ramps to be underwater. But, uh, we're hoping on a, on a near-term project that will alleviate that problem, so stay tuned on that. Um, we also have a property fronting on East Columbia that's just to the west of our improvements that we're working with. N J and I are working with them, uh, to do their frontage as well to kind of match what we did. We'll see how that goes. And, uh, let's see, we have another sidewalk project on Maple north of the middle school. It's to do some infill work at Northwest First. From Northwest First West, pass that new Y Gant, uh, eightplex. Fill in two blocks of gaps there and plus wrap around the corner and go north on First. Um, so we'll do that whole curb return there, so that'll be nice. We're gonna rearrange the ADA ramps just to get a little better alignment and improve those to modern standards. So that'll, that'll be nice for the kids. We're gonna wait till summer to do that one for obvious reasons. We don't want a million little footprints in wet concrete. We have to deal with enough of that. We also have a, um, a pump station of E J Smith right by the bridge. I don't know if you've seen it there. It's kind of obscured. Um, it handles, oh my gosh, probably twenty, at least twenty-five percent of the city sewer flows. And that one station, it's really undersized. It just runs, it will only really rest like a minute between cycles, so it's really getting worked. So it's been on our radar for a long time to update that, and so, um, we're.
A lot of activity over there, scoping it out.
Yeah, you'll see a lot of us in and out of there. It's really tight. There's no place to park. It's really kind of dangerous because people are zooming up and down that road. It's gonna get worse as we go into construction, but, um, it's gonna have to happen. It's really constrained, but, um, you know, we'll have flaggers and everything else. I think we're, we're shooting for this summer on that project as well.
And that one is a sensitive lands development permit, but since it's not tied to anything else, it's just a remodel. It's planner approved, so we're, we're working on that now.
And then we've got, um, four subdivision projects kind of in play, um, in various stages of engineering review, or I'm waiting on, to get them to, to do reviews on, so. More on that later. You know, these are already ones you've approved. So, um, and then we've got our big industrial subdivision project that's the East Airport. One that proved a long time ago, what, two thousand seventeen?
Yep.
We're working slowly through the final improvements, um, to complete all of the plating on that project. Actually, there's one road piece left to do. It's Moore Road, which is on the north side of the airport. So, um, the walkers out there will have most of a loop. Yeah. Uh, except then on, uh, Honeyman and West Lane, but you'll have four plus miles to walk on nice paths up there. That work will start, um, mid-February. They'll actually shut the road down in, in phases to complete that, so just, you'll want to stay away from there if you can. They'll be putting in utilities and roads, so it'll be a pretty active site. And then we're working with the developer that owns the gravel pit to do, um, to do engineering on improvements on West Lane Road. They don't have a construction schedule. It's just engineering at this point, so we'll, we'll see how that plays out. And then, um, food cart pods, you guys have noticed that's in the middle of town. It's going along great. Um, I think they're shooting for sometime in the spring. I have no idea when, but.
No, they really want it to be open for Memorial Day, so we'll see if they make it. I would hope.
Yeah, so it's looking great. Um, the design, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's just in a great spot, so. And then, uh, let's see, the, uh, just kind of a quick update because we haven't been in a while on the master plans. I'm sure that, uh, you, you, you may be aware that we have, you know, master plans that's kind of guide our work, you know, as the city, you know, all of these water projects I mentioned and some of the road projects, those all come out of these master plans. We actually recommended in two thousand and eight, the planning commission did, to update, start to update on those plans in two thousand and eight. And, um.
Yeah, we're almost, we're almost done.
Bill was on planning commission. And was a part of that recommendation. Thank you, Bill. It finally got funded in two thousand and fourteen and we just wrapped up the last one. And we just adopted it in June of twenty twenty-three. That was the Stormwater Master Plan. We even did a rail corridor study update, so pretty much everything that we had that was, that was twenty plus years old got updated. So we're really excited to have those. Um, not many people know what they do, but they kind of lay out all of our fees for development and rates and things like that, so it really updates all of that. Plus it gives us a really clear vision moving forward. So for N J's work on the annexation stuff that we're looking at, or the U G B expansion rather, it sort of helps, um, create that vision. Um, so it's helpful in that way. Anyway, those are all online if you care to look at them. And they're multiple pages long, so.
Hundreds.
Well, that's great. Uh, might add a comment, a thank you, I guess, or at least a positive thing. It's been so long since we've met. It seems like it's not been that long because we've had a couple of meetings.
Right, we're meeting on the fifty-year plan in Parks and Rec.
But, uh, I guess it has been that long. Wasn't even at that, so, you know, it's been longer for me. But, uh, you did some work up on Bella Vista, proved the street. That's been great. Done a great job up there. Just want to thank you for the good work that everybody did.
Sure.
So storm hit.
Yeah.
Looking good. Would have been a lot worse if he hadn't have worked on it.
Are you in terms of the paving or?
Paving.
Yeah, the paving turned out really well. I, I think we were all shocked by that. It was, it, it turned out really well. Good news.
Right.
All right. Well, does anybody else have anything to say or shall we call this one? Uh, it is now seven forty-six. This planning commission meeting.